Okay, it looks like it's six o'clock Cindy, do we have everyone?
I'm admitting Jim Sanders now, but yes, other than that, you're all here.
Okay, well, let's give him a minute to get in.
He is in.
Fabulous. Okay, well, it is six o'clock, so we will go ahead and call the Johnson City Council Work Session number 21-06 to order Cindy roll call please.
Councilmember Coe?
Here.
Evans?
Sir.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Temple?
Here.
First item that we have on the agenda this evening is a closed session per Iowa Code Section 21.51J to discuss the purchase of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price, the governmental body would have to pay for that property. The minutes and tape recording of a session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So move Evans.
Second Coe.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Motion passed. Very good. Just to make sure that we're all here Cindy, would you please take a roll call plea again please?
Councilmember Temple?
Here.
Coe?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Great. Okay, we're back in open session. The next item on the agenda 4B is the Bonzak and Fromout LLP Presentation of the June 30, 2020 Audit. Is this you Theresa or who's going to take this one?
I am. Good evening there in council. We have on the Zoom call with us this evening Sarah Bonzak and I'm not sure if Mia is there or not, but Sarah is here to make a presentation for you for our June 30th, 2020 audit. And I would have to say that both staff and our auditors had some real challenges this year with COVID, the COVID pandemic and our offices being open then closed and then not accessible to the public. And they were running into that, of course, on lots of clients. And so it's taken us a while to get here today. But I did send the audit out to you, the complete audit, but we'll have a presentation here tonight and Sarah will hit on the main points. So we'll turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you Theresa. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight to present the June 30th, 2020 financial statement. I was going to talk mainly from this presentation, but certainly if you have any questions on any of the information you've been given, feel free to ask a question. This year, when we came out to do the audit, we did two different types of audit. One is the financial statement audit, which is the financial statements of the city. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest form of opinion that you can receive. The second type of audit that we do is the government auditing standards audit, and the purpose of that audit is twofold. One is to look at your internal control systems or your checks and balances, if you will, and to test them to see that they're functioning as they were designed. And the second part of that is to look at compliance with laws, regulation, debt agreements. With the compliance piece, we had no findings. With the internal controls, due to the timing of when we had presented those the year before, we have repeated some of those findings from last year. I do want to note that on two of them, the city have implemented compensating controls as of February of last year. So I would expect, based on reevaluation next year, that those probably will be downgraded. That, the summary of those results start on page 83. The city was not required to have a federal single audit this year. You have to expend more than $750,000 in order for it to be required, and the city was well below that last year. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the governmental funds revenue. And this is a snapshot of all of your governmental funds as if they were consolidated. Total for fiscal year 2020 was 34.2 million compared to 2019, which was 31.9 million. Probably the most significant pieces to that are, the first one's property taxes. Your property taxes increased about 519,000. That was primarily due to an increase in assessed value of about 4%. Your TIF increased 1,028,000, and that again was primarily due to increase in assessed values within the TIF district. And the last one to point out there is other city taxes increased 1,028,000, and that's primarily due to your local option sales tax revenue, which was 1.2 million this year, and that's a new tax source for the city in 2020. All of those were offset slightly by a decrease in use of money in property, which was about 341,000. And that's primarily due to available interest rates in the current year. The next graph is your expenditures. Your total governmental expenditures for 2020 were 55.7 million versus 2019, which was 36.9 million. But don't get alarmed. If you look at the debt service piece of that, it increased 17.1 million. And that was primarily due to the city currently refunding 5.8 million of the Series 2012 bonds and 12.4 million of the Series 2013B bonds. And because it's a current refunding, it shows as debt service in the current year. But this refunding will reduce your debt service payments over the next 13 years by 4.1 million. And just to note, the total outstanding general obligation debt as of 6/30/20 was 96.6 million. Some other things to point out on this, this graph, you also had a $3.7 million increase in capital outlay, and that's primarily due to your 70th Avenue improvements projects and the other capital projects that the city has going on. The total capital assets netted depreciation was 240 million, which was about an 18.5 million increase over 2019. The other item to point out is public safety had increases of about 1.1 million, and that's due to increases in full-time equivalents for the police and part-time positions in the fire and ambulance, coupled with your general wage increase. Oh, and in, I'm sorry. The other thing to point out there is you had a decrease in community development, and that's due to urban renewal projects that were being completed last year. Okay. And the last graph I have is on your enterprise funds. And you look across, they're pretty comparable to the year before. Your water fund had net income of 2.1 million. Your sewer fund had net income of 694,000, and your stormwater had net position increase of about 986,000. And the thing that I normally look at with your enterprise funds is the cash flow from operations, and all three of your enterprise funds had positive cash flows from operation, which is, was a good indicator of the health of those funds. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I guess I would ask you, just in, as, in your review, how would you kind of summer up, summarize the position of Johnston as a result of your, your this audit?
As I mentioned, the enterprise funds are in a favorable position. And I would say the same thing of your governmental funds. All of them had positive net positions this year. And as far as the, the ending balance of your general fund, although it decreased slightly from the year before, it's still in the benchmark of what we would expect it to be.
Yeah, all in all, it sounds like we're in a good position.
I would agree, yes.
That's what we want to hear.
So in looking at the, at the full audit, if, on pages 85, 86, 87, it highlights some different, what it can, what it sort of, what it, significant deficiencies. And you talked a little bit about this as well. I don't want to go into detail because I presume it looks like, you know, the city is working on taking some corrective action on those. But in your earlier comments, you mentioned something about a deficiency or downgrade as a result of these? Or can you review that just real quick?
Um, no, we did have the findings. So there were, there were three findings this year. Those were findings from the year before. Oh, I think what I had said was, on two of them, the city has put in some corrective action. So we would be able to alleviate the significant deficiency. So within the internal control reporting, there's three levels. There's material weakness, which the city does not have any, and those are the most severe. Significant deficiency is kind of the, the, the other, errors could occur and not be detected on a timely basis. But the lowest level is referred to as a controlled deficiency. And a controlled deficiency is, there's, there's this issue with the design of the internal control, but the city has put compensating controls around it, that if something happened, we feel that it would be detected on a timely basis. So I'm thinking with what they have put into place, we'd be able to move those findings out of being significant deficiencies.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you clarifying that.
Any other questions council? Not Theresa, do you have anything to add?
No, this was the, the third year of our three-year agreement with this firm, and I've asked them to, we had an extension in their agreement that says that we could extend it for three more years if, if we so desired. I've asked them to prepare a proposal for that so that I can take it to the finance committee and we can discuss it with you before I take it to the council. So that would be forthcoming to the committee.
Okay, very good.
And Theresa, just typically, how long do we usually work with an auditing firm? And then we change periodically? How does that work?
Well, we work, the city worked with the state forever until I came. And then we worked with Denman for six years, and we worked with RSM for three years. I'm hoping to work with Bonzak for at least six, like to work with them at least six years. And then I always think it's a good idea to have a new set of eyes look at them.
Yeah, I think that's a great, great approach, and I really appreciate that. So thank you for having that. I think it's good to do that. And while at the same time having some amount of consistency. So it's a good balance.
Anything else on this item? If not, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 4C, discuss Hanson Real Estate proposed town center speculative special commercial building. I'm assuming that's probably Adam.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, this is a brief update for you on conversations we've been having with Hanson Real Estate for a proposed spec building in the town center. These conversations have been ongoing for some time. They started prior to COVID and then sort of stalled out during the, the peak of the crisis and reinitiated here in the last couple of months to try to get something off the ground here in 2021 and open up in 2022. So what you're, so what you're seeing in the attached proposal, a letter to the city from Hanson is some revised terms for proposed construction of a 13,500 square foot, two-story mixed-use building that would be speculative by Hanson at their risk. Unfortunately, I didn't get the attachment, it looks like, on there for where this building's positioned. But it is the corner of Merle Hay Road and 62nd, and it is the building along 62nd, not the building that goes north along Merle Hay Road. So if you recall, we've had some other discussions on the Merle Hay Road building, but this would be the one that would be adjacent to that on the south and the east side. For tonight's purposes, if the council's receptive to the proposed negotiated terms, we would move forward with development agreement terms being drafted, and Hanson would immediately begin with the design of the building. The construction period for it is about 12 months. So they've got several months of design work that we need to get done, and then a proposed groundbreaking June or July of 2021. Going to give you a brief outline of the kind of key terms of the spec building. So it's proposed to be land acquisitions of $10 per square foot, kind of referring back to the original master development agreements for the town center. The properties were proposed for acquisition between $12 and $15 per square foot. So this would be a reduction on that per square foot basis. Estimated acquisition cost would be about $100,000 for this initial lot. Master Development Agreement also talks about a maximum of 10-year 75% rebate off of the TIF increment that would be generated from buildings at council's discretion. This would extend that potentially to up to 12 years. Essentially, if they constructed the spec building and it was empty or less than 75% occupied for the first year, they would have 100% TIF rebates on that building for that first year and the second year potentially, and then capping out at a total of 12 years with the remaining 10 years being at a 75% rebate for the original master development agreement terms. I will say, I think it would be surprising if the building didn't reach 75% occupancy by the second year. And Hanson isn't too concerned about the restriction there on this of 12 years for a total rebate, but they're trying to build in some extra assurances since they would have substantial risk from a leasing standpoint there. There's two components of common area maintenance within the town center. The first is really the kind of true maintenance costs of snow removal, lawn care, and repairs to any of the common space. The master development agreement poses that everybody with a constructed building would be paying in percentage, their fair percentage based off of the constructed square footage and their proportional building. This would reduce that for the first three years to their percentage of total square footage of their building relative to the proposed complete buildout of the town center. So for example, there's about 170,000 square foot of likely square footage of buildings in the town center. This building would make up 13,500 square feet of that. So they'd be paying roughly 8% of the overall maintenance costs for the first three years, and then it would adjust back to their percentage, the 13,500 of the total constructed square footage in the town center after that. The second area of common area maintenance is specific for entertainment, is envisioned that businesses in the town center that would be benefiting from those entertainment activities that are put on by venue works would be paying a sep, be paying a separate common area maintenance cost for engaging in those activities. Since it's a spec building, we don't know who those tenants will be at this point, and we're still working through what the programming activity will be and what the overall budget will be for venue works. It's proposed that those costs would be waived for the first three years and then go back to the original terms of any tenant benefiting from those entertainment operations paying in based off a percentage of their square footage relative to the other payees into that common area maintenance. The next bullet point there talks about potential for any revisions to the town center design guidelines. This is more just a note that as we've worked through the city hall signs and some other components within the town center, there would probably be some tweaks to those design guidelines, just things that we've learned as we've gone through the process. It's possible that we may experience those with this spec building as well. I'm just an intent there to collaborate on any revisions as needed. The next point, and Cindy, if you could pull up the attachment there labeled future papers. The agreement indicates that the city would incrementally install the brick baver sidewalks and landscaping along Merle Hay Road. That was removed from the original design. And I guess maybe more accurately be phrased that they were not necessarily removed, they were delayed. And if you look there, the areas shaded in blue are on city property or public easement through the town center association. Those are papers that are directly adjacent to future buildings. And there's concern about installing those papers prior to those buildings being in place and causing damage to those papers. So they're pulled out of the original lease purchase construction with the intent of being constructed after the buildings were done. And so if you scroll to kind of the bottom there of that page, the spec building then is that bottom red rectangle. It would be proposed, and the city would go in and construct the blue portions there leading up towards the ice rink, sort of along Merle Hay Road. So those original, or those initial papers would go in, in front of a building that hasn't been constructed yet, but are envisioned to be sort of necessary to connect to that spec building from a pedestrian standpoint into the rest of the activities in the town center. The rest of the blue paper areas would be constructed then as an out, on an as-needed basis as those buildings go up and this connectivity is needed into the rest of the town center as well. And if you go back to the bottom there for a quick second, you also see the angled blue walkway. That's also envisioned right between where the, kind of the thin point of the red rectangles meet would be some sort of a wooden trellis that would be above the pedestrian walkway there. The intent is that would be constructed by the city on the public property at the point where both of those two buildings are in place. We're just noting in here as well that we would try to put in any foundations alongside those buildings being constructed to minimize the impacts, and that as TIF funds were available, that trellis would be constructed by the city at that point. The final note on here refers again back to the town center guidelines and the type of tenants that are allowed in specific buildings and on specific floors of buildings. Just kind of an acknowledgement that Hanson, as the building owner, is allowed to place tenants per the town center guidelines in those buildings. And so kind of where that's coming from is the residential ground floor is specifically called out in the town center guidelines. We would also talk about a preference in certain buildings for retail, restaurant and entertainment uses on the ground floor and office uses on the second floor. You know, I think as we go through this process, when we see who those tenants are, both Hanson and the city want to see the restaurants and the entertainment tenants on that first floor, but there is some flexibility allowed for off of Merle Hay Road for ground floor office. I think that's anybody's preference, but they're just making sure that that door is open to them if they struggle on the restaurant and the retail side after this. So with that, Hanson's continuing to have conversations with prospective breweries and other users. Those would be users more likely to be placed along Merle Hay Road. They do think it's possible a second building could be advanced yet in 2021. And we discussed that it's possible that similar terms could be proposed for that second building if it were to rapidly approach as far as the construction timeline. But we both are acknowledging that the proposed development terms for this speculative building, one, are reflective of the current market conditions caused by COVID, and that future buildings and the incentives provided for those future buildings will be taken into account by city council reflective of the market conditions at the time of proposed construction. So with that, the general recommendation from staff is that we'd really like to see the first building go up here alongside the infrastructure being completed and open up for activities here as we move into 2021 summer. There are significant concessions in this proposed development agreement, but it is critical as far as a timeline and engaging the town center to get this underway. And the COVID-19 impacts we have seen, having talked to developers in other similar mixed-use developments across the metro are substantial, particularly in the restaurants and the entertainments and the retail sectors. And that this truly is, I think, in some fashion, a commitment that no other developer would give us as far as constructing a spec building, given the current market conditions. So I do think it is reflective of Hanson's commitment to the project. They are asking for, you know, some additional incentives to make this happen. But as I've indicated, it's not necessarily reflective of the future incentives that will need to be granted as new market conditions emerge. So with that, happy to answer any questions, Councilmember.
Council, any questions for Adam? Comments?
So Adam, I apologize if these seem like simplistic questions, but this is the first time I've heard talk about this building and besides what I read in the package. So basically, the, the ask from the city are the concessions listed here. Hanson is still buying the land, basically, and building this building, but they're asking for some concessions to make it more easy to get someone to occupy it. Is that, is that the basis of this?
That's correct. So they would still be purchasing the property from the city for the spec building under the same square footage as outlined and envisioned in the town center. The price would be reduced down to $10 per square foot. And then they would be the ones making the investments in the building and would own that building. And then the additional concessions to help bring down the potential lease rates. There is the additional TIF increment incentive as well as the reduction or temporary reduction in the common area maintenance costs.
Okay, I appreciate the, the making it simple for me. This is, I went into this thinking, I, I didn't understand why we would do this. And now I'm, I, it sounds, it sounds reasonable. So thank you.
And Councilwoman Martin, no, no apologies necessary. I think the Economic Development Committee met three times to discuss this, and, and Adam did a nice job of going back to Hanson and talking about, you know, some changes in the language and making sure that, that it does, that it expresses exactly what it is that, that we felt comfortable with and that they also found acceptable. So, so just because you've seen it for the first time, you don't need to apologize. We've seen it, we've seen it several times. I appreciate that, Mayor.
Yeah. I would just add, I think one of the things we talked about at the Economic Development Committee is, you know, I think one of the challenges we always have whenever we're doing a TIF agreement is that, you know, each agreement we make becomes sort of the floor for future agreements with somebody else somewhere else in town. And so especially the, you know, the 100%, which, which, you know, then goes for beyond the 10 years until, because you get, they get 10 years once, what's the building is, you know, is, has some occupancy in it, so that clock doesn't start ticking. We want to make sure that, that the development agreement that has that, this in there makes it clear that the reason that these terms are is because of the unique COVID circumstances, neat, unique kind of economic outcomes that are, are being generated because of this, because, and try, and attempt to sort of give us some protection as, as good as that can be, that this keeps us from having kind of Uh, as, as good as that can be, that this keeps us from having, um, kind of this TIF agreement used against us. Uh, by other developers and other projects, so.
Any other, any other questions or comments?
This is, uh, do you have a visual map or something that'll show where this building is? I know there was the hotel also being considered, right? A where will the hotel be and where is this building, May?
Cindy, if I can share my screen for a moment, so I'll pull up, uh, the overall map here.
Um, just go ahead, Adam.
Can everybody see the town center map?
We can.
Yeah.
Uh, if you can see my mouse then, so the okay, the building Hanson is proposing for construction. Is the one outlined in blue here. Uh, I just didn't want to get anyone confused because they previously talked about potential building number one. Being this one directly to the north of it. Um, but I think with the, the acknowledgement that they have some potential office users, this one, uh, makes more sense for them for, uh, building number one, uh, given they might have some media tenants ready to sign on. Uh, but if they were to do a second building, uh, yet this year as well, I think it would likely be uh, the restaurant retail building directly to the north of that. And then the hotel building is, uh, directly to the east of this.
Yeah, I, I was a little bit concerned where was the hotel going and where was this new thing coming back? I like this. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Adam? Well, Adam, I think you've done a great job, uh, working through the issues on this. So, um, you know, we've, uh, we've had this discussion at the economic development committee, but, uh, you're absolutely right that, um, you know, we need to, we need to continue to see some progress on this development and under the circumstances. Uh, these terms, um, I believe are, are reasonable and will continue to, uh, keep moving us forward to see, um, see the kind of, uh, progress that we need to see there. So, thank you.
Yeah, if any additional concerns, uh, do pop up, certainly let me know, uh, as soon as possible. You know, as I mentioned, Hanson would be getting design work and be investing, uh, dollars here more or less immediately following the work sessions. So we just want to make sure that, uh, they're able to do that with the level of comfort while they work on finalizing the development agreement terms and taking them back to council for consideration.
Thank you, Adam. We'll move on to item number four D, discuss setting a date for a special election for the vacant city council seat. So Cindy or is it Jim?
It's, it's Jim, but he's muted.
Does he know he's muted?
Maybe he does. Tim, you want to start and I'll go help Jim?
Well, Cindy and I met, um, uh, approximately a week, about 10 days ago to go over chapter, the chapter 372 and how it might affect, um, our special election. And, uh, I, we checked with, um, my partner Bob regarding uh, the issue of what, what was practicable date where, which it uses, which is used in the code section in 37213. Have the election in at the earliest practical date. And he had no experience either with Urbandale or, or, or Altoona regarding that. Uh, I know that Cindy has been in touch with the Polk County Election Office. And she then, based on the information that she and I came up with and the information that she uh, obtained from the Polk County Election Office and did a short little special election timeline and information. And I'll, uh, turn that over to her.
If you were talking about me, I just walked back in.
What, what Tim was suggesting is maybe you could, uh, tell us how you've, uh, created the, uh, timeline schedule.
Sure. Um, so we're required to give a minimum of 60 days notice to the county election office. Um, so basically you pick a date, it needs to be a Tuesday. Um, so the election dates are all Tuesdays. Um, there's, um, it looked like about 28 days, um, from the election date back to the primary date. And then, um, nomination papers are due 53 days prior to the election date. So those numbers actually started with the, um, election office. Those May 25th and June 1st dates came from them. Excuse me. So then I just extrapolated it out, um, to get us through June, basically. Um, you see here these days from setting to filing. So if we, um, this assumes we're going to set on April 5th. That would leave if we went to June 8th, it'd be 11 days from the time we set the hearing until nomination papers were due to the county election office. And then subsequent weeks at a weekend, so.
And Cindy, just to confirm, there aren't any other elections that are scheduled between now and November, is there?
Uh, no.
No.
And, and another, I, I did have a call today from the county election office, um, as you and council member Cope are aware, I'm sure. There was legislation passed, um, changing some, um, election rules, absentee things. So there is an impact to the county election office. They have to order new envelopes, new things. So they're, um, anxious like we are to figure out what that is so they can get moving. This will be their first election under those new rules. So they're just trying to get a, a handle on what our timeline looks like. So they can make sure they have enough time.
Sure. Well, it sounds like Tim, um, and Cindy, from your research, um, there isn't any clear guidance on what the earliest practicable date would be. I mean, it's, it's not, it's there, there.
Very discretionary term, nebulous, um, there, um, you know, we even went to the point of defining it as Webster's dictionary and, um, I know that Cindy indicated in her conversation with the election office. They had never, uh, they had never really defined it, uh, per se. And so it's really, uh, it'd be our opinion, it'd be really up to the, uh, up to the, uh, the council's desire.
So I guess as I think about it, earliest practicable doesn't need necessarily mean the earliest possible date. Um, and, and as I shared at, uh, our last council meeting, I want to make sure that our residents are aware that there's an election even coming up. I don't think, I'll, I'll bet if you walk down the street you know, one out of 50 people wouldn't even, wouldn't even be able to tell you that we have a vacancy on the city council and that there's there is a, uh, election that will be coming up at some point. So we need to make sure that our residents know that there is an election. We need to make sure that those who have an interest in running for this vacancy have an opportunity to be aware. And, and make a decision to do that and have time to prepare, uh, for that election, um, adequately. So um, you know, those June dates look latter, later June dates look better to me than, than the earlier dates of May and, and June 1st.
So, yeah, um, and I just want to make sure, so this is, this election will be whoever wins this election will then serve the remainder of Councilman Soroka's term. So this is a, uh, whoever holds this, they're going to hold this seat for two and a half years. Um, so it's
2022, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, it's, you know, I, I guess my sense would be, I, you know, and I, I also, I, I'm probably, I'm not aware, has the city, have we done any communication at all about the fact that, uh, an election has been requested from a petition standpoint?
Yeah.
So at this point, there's no reason if you're a citizen of Johnston to even be aware that there is going to be an election. All, all the people know, uh, to, the only thing that's been communicated so far is uh, Scott resigned and we filled the vacancy with Councilman Temple. And so I, I do think that we, you know, we need to give, you know, some time. You know, maybe do a, another, you know, article that, in the Johnston Living, sort of like what, um, was done with Councilman Temple's appointment to sort of say that. You know, uh, his petition has been submitted requesting an election and that the council's expected on, at its April 5th meeting to set a date for, fill in the blank. Um, and that, that way we give people plenty of time to or we, we promote the fact that there is actually going to be an election and promote the fact that if you're interested in running, you have until such and such a date to file papers. And I also think we need to give people as much time as possible. So as, as I, I guess I would suggest we look at that June 22nd election date. Um, I think that meets the statutory requirements, sounds like. Um, and at the same time, provides enough time for anybody who's interested to, to really give some serious thought to it. Um, and, and know that, um, and have time to collect the signatures, uh, to, to do that. And therefore will, you know, to, to really, I think, you know, do our citizens justice as far as having, you know, fully be notified about the fact that there is an election if they desire to serve on the council.
I totally agree with everything Tom just said.
There's a first.
No, it's a second.
Um, well, I appreciate, uh, Councilman Cope's opinion on this. Um, my opinion is that it's a little you know, that, that whole wording at the earliest practical date. I mean, we have a person here who submitted petitions, 350 or whatever it was, petition signed signatures and he had to do it in a very fast turnaround. Um, and now, you know, we're, uh, we're months away from an election and I totally agree with Councilman's cope that we need to have, people need to know about it. Uh, and if they want to run for the seat, they need to have the opportunity to get their, uh, petitions in. Um, and I think, I don't know if it's in here, but it's something like 43 signatures. Um, I was going to say advocate for the June 8th date. The May 25th is way too soon and the June 1st is the day after Memorial Day. So I don't believe either of those dates would work. But I was thinking that the May 8th date would work because ba- basically what we're looking here is we've got a person who's, uh, who's advocated for an election because he wants to serve in this seat. And then I'm not saying he's going to get it. There's going to be somebody that's going to get this seat. Um, and, and he wants to start serving right away in that position. So that's where I'm at. Now, I'm not saying I'm, you know, this, the end of the discussion, I'm just saying my opinion is the 8th of June.
Yeah, and, and I guess Councilman Martin, uh, there may be five or six or 10 or 15 other people out in, in the city who think that they're the right person to serve for this. And I think they all, all 20,000 residents of Johnston deserve a right to go through that process, thought process. And decide, and, and not only, not only to just, to, to realize, A, there's an election and B, do I want to run? I think that second part is the hard part. The collecting the 43 signatures, that's not particularly challenging. But, but thinking through, do I want to commit myself to the time and effort it takes to serve on the council? That's a significant thought process. And I think by setting the, basically requiring them to make a decision by April 16th. When they may not even know, um, you know, until, you know, as soon as we can start communicating this until sometime this week, then election's even happening. And we haven't told anybody that this election's coming up. Nobody knows, except obviously the people who signed this petitions, maybe they even recognized it. I just really am concerned about that, and, and the idea that just because one person thinks that they're the right person and they want to run. Uh, I mean, it's not like we don't have a, uh, you know, qualified person serving in this position right now. So I, I feel really strongly that we need to have as much time as possible, give our residents as much time as possible. We're now going to spend thousands of dollars on this election, thousands of dollars that we didn't need to spend. Um, and, and so I think we need to do it right. And I'm really opposed to anything that rushes that date. And so I feel really strongly that it needs to be that April 30th, May 25th, June 22nd date.
Right. And, and Councilman Cope, I, I, you just, you just pushed on, pushed on a button there that, that I was, I wanted to share as well. And that is, I don't want any of our residents, the 22,000 people who live here, to believe that we just rushed or rammed this thing through. I mean, to be fair to all of our residents, to be fair to all of the eligible voters and potential candidates out there. I think we need to take time, we need to communicate that there's the vacancy. We need to communicate that, you know, there's this opportunity. If this is something that you're interested in doing, give them sufficient time to make that decision. And to, uh, you know, gather the signatures and, and, and do whatever little campaigning they can do in a short, very short period of time. I mean, we all had much longer periods of time to think about this and, and to prepare for it and to campaign for it when we ran for our positions. Uh, you know, as you look at, you know, as we look at this, we're still talking about just a couple of months that this person any of these people, and it could be, you know, we could have five people come forward or more and say that they, they're interested in, in this, uh, in this position. So we just need to make sure that we are being fair to our residents, fair to our, our, uh, our, our voters and fair to our potential candidates in this process.
And Mayor, to, tonight, we're really just looking for direction from the council so we can prepare the resolution and, and work with the election office. So what I'm hearing is we've got two of the council members that have, um, uh, suggested that the, it'd be on June 22nd and then one on June 8th. So I'm just wondering if we can get to a, a consensus, um, to, to which date we want to conduct this.
Well, Jim, I know I don't have a vote on the resolution. However, I do have a, I, I do have uh, uh, an opinion and, and I do have ultimately a veto if, uh, you know, I disagree. Um, I, you know, I support what Councilman Cope and, and Councilman Evans have suggested here.
I guess I would like to hear from Suresh what he's thinking.
I'm thinking, just that way, I had the right button. Cindy, help me, help me understand that. Um, so the election happens on the June, we can, June 8th, I guess. I'll just say for, for discussion sake here. Will that council member able to take out on the same day or the next day? Or is there some period of wait time?
Sorry, Suresh, I didn't understand your question.
So let's say the election happens on the 8th and some person wins on the 8th of June 8th. Will that new person who's elected be taking oath on the same day? Or is there a wait period before that person takes their oath?
Um, Timmy, you can weigh in here, but there's no, there's no wait period. Um, they would be seated as soon as they took their oath. So whatever day that that would happen.
Okay.
You'd have to certify the election results. You'd have to make sure that, you know, you have to go through that whole election certification process. I mean, the, the, you know, the election result that you see that night is not the official result. The result has to be certified. So that process can take a few days.
Yeah, there's, there's an abstract that comes from the county election office. And once we have that, then that's when they can take their oath.
Yeah, right. I was just trying to understand that. So I, I, I think, I, I really think June 22nd could be the right day to do it because I agree with Tom and everybody else saying that we need to give the city's citizens enough time to consider that there's an election and there'll be so much to go on and so forth, so we can make that right decision. I think I'll go with the June 22nd as well.
John?
Well, I was going to thank Suresh so I don't have to be a tiebreaker. I, you know, I would go with the 22nd as well. I, I don't know, um, you know, it's going to take some time to get the word out to the public. And I don't know, hopefully we can get it in the next, uh, Johnston Living, but I don't know if we do we still have time to do that even, Cindy?
Yes, Janet actually just sent some email, uh, that, uh, information is due to the Living Magazine on next Tuesday. That information is due to the Living Magazine on next Tuesday, so.
Next Tuesday. So that'd be before the council meeting, of course.
Right, because we have three weeks between meetings.
Right, yeah, so. Yeah, I think going with the 22nd is the best option. We need to get the word out there and people need to think about whether they want to run or not. So I'd be supportive of that.
I want to underscore something else that Councilman Cope said, and 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 that is that, you know, in the meantime, we do have a very qualified individual serving in that vacancy right now. So. The residents of Johnston are being well served.
Appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you.
You bet. Does anyone else, is there any additional comments? If not, Jim, it sounds like we have some direction. Do you have what you need?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have one, oops, we are over our time. We have one additional item. Should we pick this one up at the back end of the council meeting, Jim?
I think that would be fine. I know we have a number of people that have joined the meeting tonight. To listen to this conversation. So it'd probably be good if we went ahead and tried to get to that at the end of the council meeting.
Okay, maybe. Since we have some people on for it. It would be a little bit unusual, but why don't we take it up under public communications? We'll just handle it there.
Yes, at the beginning of the meeting, that would be good.
All right, let's do that. Okay. Let's go ahead and adjourn the work session and we'll dial in for the regular council meeting, which will start momentarily. We are adjourned. Thank you.